Okay, we will now do the oath and statement of office for new trustees. This is only for the new trustees that just recently were appointed for May. That includes myself. I can't get the oath in office because I have to take it. So I'm going to turn it over to Kerry and have him do the oath of office.
Okay, thank you, sir. For all of the new trustees or those getting sworn in again, if you could raise your right hand, please. And if you could repeat, I state your name. Appointed as trustee of Canyon Regional Water Authority, do solemnly swear that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, or promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or the thing of value, or promised any public office of employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected.
Or promised any public office of employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God.
Congratulations.
And then if you'll do the statement of officer, this is the same right here.
Oh, wow, I didn't know there were two. Okay, I state your name.
I am Sherri McDaniel.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee of Canyon Regional Water Authority.
Do solemnly swear that I faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee of Canyon Regional Water Authority.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of laws of the United States of this state, so help me God.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Under penalties of perjury, I declare that I have read the foregoing statement and that the facts stated therein are true.
I declare that I have read the foregoing statement and that the facts stated therein are true.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, now that that's out of the way, we have the election of officers. So you may remember last month, we left Vice President open because we were going to have this election. It's for all of the positions, President, Vice President, Treasurer and Secretary. The way we handled this last year was if there were multiple nominations, the first person nominated would get voted on first. If they have a majority of the votes, they're elected. If they do not have a majority of the votes, it will move to the second person who was nominated. So. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So everyone will have an opportunity to have their voice heard if they're nominated. I think that's probably the best way to do it. We did it that way last year, and I suggest we do it that way again. I have to turn this over to Kerry because I can't preside over the meeting. So I'm going to turn this over to Kerry so he can open the floor for nominations for President.
Thank you, sir. And the floor is now open for nominations for the Office of President. Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Rohan in a second. Are there any other nominations for the Office of President? Okay, hearing none, we will vote on Mr. Rohan. This is one by one, really? Okay. Okay, so we'll start with Ms. Stubing. Spawn.
Aye.
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 And Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That is unanimous.
You can hand it back over to me if you'd like.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I guess I should tell you I'm willing to serve. I didn't tell you that.
I wasn't gonna hit you. There were no opportunities to say no.
All right, that will open the floor for nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Regina Frankie.
Okay, we have a nomination for Regina Frankie.
Willing to serve.
I would. Other nominations for Vice President. Okay, hearing none, we'll go to a vote. I don't think, because this is by acclamation, we really don't need a vote. If y'all want a roll call vote, we can. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ayes have it. We'll move to the position of Treasurer. I'll accept nominations for the position of Treasurer.
I nominate Sherri McDaniel.
We have a nomination for Sherri McDaniel. Any other nominations for Treasurer? Hearing no other nominations for Treasurer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And lastly, we have the Office of Secretary. Are there any nominations for the Office of Secretary?
I'll nominate Mr. Ted Gibbs.
Any other nominations for the position of Secretary?
Doris Stubing.
Doris Stubing. We have a second nomination for Doris Stubing. Do we have any other nominations? You don't have to have a second for a nomination. A second's just in further acclamation of supporting someone. It does not require a second. Okay, so we do have two. So we will start with a roll call vote for Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs needs half of the vote to be appointed to Secretary. If he does not get half, we will move on to Ms. Stubing, who also has to get half. If she doesn't, we'll have a little bit of a mess. Okay, we'll start with you, Doris. No. Mr. Forso?
No.
Ma'am? Nick?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Kia?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ayes have it. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gilbert, I apologize. I didn't mean to marginalize your vote. How do you vote?
No worries. Aye.
Thank you. Ayes have it. Mr. Gibbs will be Secretary. Thank you all. We'll move on to announcements. The Board of Trustees of Canyon Regional Water Authority made during the meeting, closed the meeting and hold executive session pursuant to an accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Board of Trustees made any time during the meeting, closed the meeting and hold an executive session consultation with its attorneys concerning any of the matters to be considered during the meeting pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. As far as committee appointments, I do not intend to change the makeup of the committees. Unless someone wants to serve that isn't already on a committee, please reach out to me. The President sets committees. Mr. Sherman, you are excused at any point when you're ready to go, sir.
Yes, I was gonna make that comment. I have a sick child and a wife that is out of town, so I must excuse myself. My notes for the construction committee are included. If there's any questions, Brandon can answer them, but I must excuse myself.
Okay. Thank you. Item seven, public comments, comments on non-agenda items, no discussion from the board, three-minute time limit. Is there anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak on a specific item of the agenda? Hearing none and having none signed up, we'll move on to item eight, the consent items. This is for CRWA Resolution 250501 concerning the approval of the minutes from the April meeting and the approval of the financial and check register reports from March 2025. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. We'll move on to item nine, reports. We'll start with staff. I think we're moving pretty quickly. If you're okay, we'll just stay in the regular order. If we get bogged down, we'll throw them up.
Okay.
So there's, the drought report is in your packets. Any questions on the drought report?
Questions on the drought report?
No, not really. It was, you know, the flows and the streams went up momentarily and it really didn't change the flow rate out of Canyon at all or into Canyon. Mr. Telfer? Any updates on water treatment, storage, or transmission operations? Okay.
I think just, you have the stuff in your packet, but we did have a number of wells go down at Wells Ranch, three in total. We had a third one go down. One was up very quickly. The other is in a future, our later agenda item here. It's going to take a few more, a couple more months, and then the other one should be back up and running pretty quickly. I think that's just notable for y'all to hear out loud and not have to read on a piece of paper.
Yeah. Lake Dunlap, the facility upgrades. We are looking to get the strainer contract out this week for execution. And we just are looking to, I think we did get the scope and fee finally. I'm reviewing that right now. And so that we can get that finalized and start working on the membrane improvements at Lake Dunlap. Hayes Caldwell, right now, the focus has turned largely to getting the mobile membrane filtration unit in. There's a lot of preparation that's needed for that, including direction from the TCEQ, not only on this mobile unit, but on the mobile unit that's already installed and was approved. We are having to now produce engineered plans for both of those facilities. The TCEQ sprung that on us during a recent inspection, and they said that they're not going to hold us up. They'll still let us get it in service, but, you know, because typically their reviews are, you know, there's a couple of 60-day reviews in there. So they're not going to hold us up, but we are having to get our Dura focused on getting those plans for us and all that information for the mobile units. So that has pushed back their efforts on the pilot study. We're still making preps on our side for the pilot study as well, but for the electrical and the piping and all that. But we are putting the mobile unit ahead of the pilot study. So we're looking to get the mobile unit in service probably now sometime around the end of July. It'll be delivered and ready at the end of June, and we're trying to get everything ready so that we can get it going. And then soon after that, you know, get the pilot studies in and also get those going for their 90-day study period. The ground storage tank, we ran into a little hiccup. And in going out and checking on things, it was discovered there's some items that were not in the right place. And through our investigations, we finally learned that one of the subcontractors did not even have a complete set of plans. DN Tank did not give them a complete set of plans. So David and Bobby went and met with them, and we also discovered that we don't feel like Cobb Finley's been doing the level of inspections that we need from them. So that's been established, the expectations, and making sure they know they're doing inspections and not just construction observation. We're working through getting all that fixed right now. So right now, I mean, we're still, you know, on schedule. We just, you know, discovered that little hiccup that could have been much worse. Luckily, you know, we had eyes in the field that were able to see it and address it.
Can you turn your microphone on, sir, for Mr. Gilbert?
There, yeah, I'm wondering the impact of the subcontractor not having the drawings. If they did an incorrect installation, something not to spec.
Well, the, probably the two main items, there's a segment of pipeline that was put in the wrong location.
Does it overflow drain?
No, sir, it wasn't the overflow drain. It was underground piping that the subcontractor felt like it was, you know, too close to a foundation. And the sheet they had, actually, near as we can tell, it was just an excerpt from the overall sheet that showed why it needed to be that close. So they decided to go ahead and move that out. That may very well have to be relocated, and then the, oh, absolutely. The other thing is there was some conduit that got put in the wrong place. That'll.
Different sub?
Yeah, that was different sub. And so that conduit may have to be relocated. We're having surveyors go out and see, but that may very well be in the right way and have to be relocated. Those are the two main things we're looking at right now. And I've also asked our Dura to go back and look at submittals that have been approved and make sure that nothing got missed on a submittal that might have a propensity to come up. I'm just wanting to make sure that, you know, we're catching everything before, you know, anything else gets put in the wrong place, before it gets buried. Yes, sir.
Answer your question?
Yes.
Sir?
So last we heard, we had, was it the raceway or the spillway that wasn't done correctly? What we talked about was $100?
The overflow structure.
And we didn't learn from that experience. I guess Cobb Finley was on that one as well, were they inspecting that?
No, sir, that was something that was supposed to have been changed during design and never did get changed.
Okay, so with this pipe underneath, I presume it's underneath the tank? Is that what you stated?
No, sir, it's not under the tank. It would have been right next to the new tank. And so the sub took it upon themselves to move it out some.
So my concern is the integrity of the tanks, are the tanks not compromised with anything? Correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know why the subcontractor didn't get the full plans? I mean.
I don't know if an actual answer was ever given, but DN Tank didn't provide them with the right plans.
Okay, so I know that the subcontractor is going to pay for the fix of the pipe. Who's gonna pay for the the moving of the conduit?
That would be the contractor also. So for Canyon Regional's purposes, we will hold DN Tank responsible for it. They in turn, I'm sure, are going to relay that responsibility down to their subcontractor.
Okay, that's why I just want to make sure that we are holding their feet to the fire because.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyway, all right.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Phase One of the project at Hayes Caldwell? Continue on if you have more.
The ozone improvements also, that contract we're looking to get out and executed this week. The Hayes Caldwell Phase One Pipeline, right now, we're still just working through easement acquisitions. I mean, the design is done. All the initial offer letters have been sent out ahead of the schedule that we developed. I do have a spreadsheet for you. I'm not a tech guy. I was not able to get it printed today such that you could actually read it on a piece of paper, but I will email it to everybody, and I'll work with Brad to figure out how to format it. But for the life of me, I just couldn't figure it out. So I will email it to everybody. I can tell you right now, we do have recent updates, and the only two that might concern me are the two that are, one owned by a developer who has, they're going through some medical issues right now, and they said that they, you know, they want to work this out with us. The other one is Walton, which is the big parcel, who's also, you know, said they're wanting to work it out with us. That's really the only one that gives me some concern, but as of right now, we're still on track, so.
Questions on the Hayes Caldwell Phase One Pipeline or on Lake Dunlap or Hayes Caldwell Water Treatment Plants? Do you have anything to add for Wells Ranch?
Just, you know, what you said earlier about the wells being down. You know, we had the one up right away. The second one should be up any day. The third one is well number one. That's going to be out of service for, you know, probably another 90 days or so because it's a complete rework. We've discovered that the threading in the pipeline in that well was actually the wrong way. It was opposite how it should be, and so over time, over the years, you know, every time that thing starts, it's been loosening up those threads a little bit, and it finally got to a point where it added enough length that it really, I mean, it burgered up everything in the well. So we're really having to completely rework that. There's an item on the agenda to approve. I declared that an emergency so that we could get going on it. There's an item on the agenda ratifying that, but as a result, some of the water that we were, that Springs Hill and Green Valley had to offer for sale, Canyon Regional is going to lease that directly to help us overcome, you know, that deficiency in the production on well one to help us get through.
Question on Wells Ranch?
On that motor that was wound wrong, where does the blame lie there? I mean, that sounds like either a manufacturing issue or an installation issue.
Well, it's hard to speculate at this point, but my guess is that it was, it either was on the plans with the wrong threads or that just somebody automatically ordered the wrong threads. You know, they're either left-handed or right-handed. It's, you only have two guesses there, but. Yes, ma'am.
Well, is that one of the wells from the first project or the second project, from the 2007 project or the 2015? From the first project? Okay. Okay, any other questions? Wells Ranch Expansion, do you have anything to add? It's not in your packet.
Just that we will be sending out that finalized report this week.
You also sent, I believe I saw the participation agreement for the Wells Ranch Expansion?
Yes, sir, that was mailed out, or emailed out Friday.
Yeah, so if you didn't receive that, reach out to staff because you should have that.
That was just sent to the general managers for each entity.
Okay. So reach out to Kerry if any of the trustees want to see that document as well. Item E, proposed Guadalupe Wilcox project?
That project, we've received a draft scope and fee and reviewing that right now to provide comments back.
Questions on that project? GBR, we'll hear from them here in just a little bit on an item we have about the Habitat Conservation Plan. Alliance Regional Water Authority?
No new updates on ARWA.
Any of the representatives that go to Alliance Regional Water Authority on behalf of Canyon Regional have anything to add?
We finally got water started.
Good.
For segment C, yay!
Glad to hear that.
Yes.
I know there have been some challenges, and that project's been a very long project. I'm glad to hear. Okay, South Texas Regional Water Planting Group, Region L, I have their initially prepared plan out for public comment coming up here, I think in the next month or maybe this month.
Yeah, the 21st of this month.
Anything to report?
No, no, sir.
GMA 13?
They did have a meeting since our last, and they went over comments on their model. Still working on the model, and Chelsea, do they have an estimated time, you said, when they thought they might have it?
Yeah, please grab a microphone.
On or about July 25th, they're estimating that the model will be available again for public comment. They're hoping to have a very quick turnaround to finalize that with the Development Board. They've been working very closely with the Development Board, and the staff at the Board is sensitive to the finalization date for this and the need for the model. So hopefully finalized by the end of August.
Questions on GMA 13? Groundwater Districts of Guadalupe and Gonzalez Counties? Anything to add?
Just that in, Gonzalez is having their monthly meeting tomorrow. They're going to start with another public workshop to discuss the proposed rule changes. And they also have on their agenda more discussion on the proposed amendment to the GBR permit.
And Guadalupe County?
Hey, I'll just, on Gonzalez County, just because I have relatives, there are some internal to Gonzalez County folks that are not thrilled with the export ban, and they're proposing, well, that's the case, we can't export our chickens, we can't export our turkeys. We can't, you know, I hate to say good enough for the goose because I just gave you two bird examples, but. And so they're pushing that, hey, if you're going to play that game, then you're going to, we're going to, you know.
Exporting a commodity.
Right.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything on Guadalupe County?
Just that we have ongoing coordination with Guadalupe County on the bright issue.
We'll talk about later on in executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, questions on the groundwater district? Personnel matters. You all should have received communication from Ruben. You may remember last month, you let me go ahead and move that timeline up a month so that we could get some of the input from existing trustees rather than asking our newer trustees to weigh in on the job the general manager's done over the last year. If you have not received that from Ruben, please let him know. So far, there's 10 of the 22 of you who've responded. Not acceptable. Just a few more, please, that way. It's really, really important as a GMED central, very, very important to receive that feedback from trustees and understand what's going well, what's not going well, what you may want to see different. That's very good feedback. Please provide it to Ruben. If you haven't seen anything, let Ruben know. He will make sure you get it. Legal matters. Oh, I'm sorry.
Two more personnel matters.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
He does all of it, but I'm not going to respond as a yes or no, because I don't know. And I found that the questions were, they took it, it took it word in lock.
Yeah.
I feel like he's doing an excellent job, but he don't deserve anything, he almost didn't, in legal profession anyhow.
So, yeah, and that form, I think, was the form that was attached to the administrative policies that we adopted. So that was the form we used. I think we did maybe make some minor edits to it, but pretty minor edits. And so if y'all like to see something different, we're happy to hear that, too. We're happy to hear that y'all would like to see a different form. You may remember that we had a general manager here for decades who probably got just a couple of reviews in his entire career here. We know that that's not an effective way to manage an organization if you're not providing a review of your general manager. This document really, truthfully, is the first real document for a general manager review. And I thank the Policy Committee for at least developing something for us because before that, you know, we kind of were, we gave John a review, but we didn't have a document like this to go back on. So I think the process is better, but we can always make it even more better, Doris. And I appreciate your comments, and please reach out to me after the meeting, and we'll discuss a little further about how we can better make sure that you, you're getting the information you need here at this meeting and outside this meeting. Yes. Let's have a conversation after the meeting and see how we can better accommodate that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on some of these forms that we were given, why are we having to do another email address?
Yeah, I had another trustee bring up, bring up an email address as a question. It's Martin raises hand quickly. And I don't have an agenda item for it. I think what we may need to do is put an agenda item.
Under personnel, because kind of we're not really, but we are.
The challenge we have is, as a public entity, we have to maintain the records of the public entity. When we send it to your personal email, then brings your personal email up for discovery at some point if we're ever in some kind of case. The other challenge we have is, once you're gone, if you have the records of the email, how do we get them from you? Similarly, I have an E-Central email. Almost all of my Canyon Regional communication comes through the E-Central email. I'm sure if E-Central gets rid of me, they'll be happy to try and turn over whatever they need for Canyon Regional, but there's always a chance that they won't. I think this was a recommendation by the attorneys, but if it's going to bring up enough questions, I'm happy for us to have an agenda item to discuss it next month, and let's kind of vet out whether it's going to work for us or not.
Okay, I just need to know if I can forward this to another one because I've already got five emails. I have to keep track of. Please don't add another one to me. You know, my phone, I think, can only handle so many emails.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
Just a way to track the communication.
And I understand that. It's just, if we can know whether or not we can forward this to another email for us to be able to monitor, that would be helpful.
Let's set this as a future agenda item, and let's discuss it and kind of have some direction from the trustees. If there's a couple trustees that are having a little bit of an issue with it, there may be more, so let's bring it up as an agenda item.
So can we still have any communication also go to the current email that you guys have on file so we get this resolved?
Yes, ma'am, yes, definitely. Okay, I'm sorry, you said you had some more personnel matters. See anyone else have questions on those couple comments?
I just want to tell you that our speak to the admin policy, we went through this a lot, had a lot of discussion on it. And the biggest issue was the fact that your personal email is discoverable if an issue comes up. So separation of that was important from a legal and a technical perspective.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Two, two items, actually. First, we have a new staff member, administrative assistant. Her name is Michaela Meredith, and she'd been there, what, a month now? She is working with Hannah and is going to be filling Hannah's shoes while she's out goofing off on us. And and then when Hannah comes back, she's actually going to be moving on to another role. Primarily working on contracting for us and then also being more of an executive assistant for me. Helping me to keep all my stuff lined up. So welcome, Michaela.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
We we also have a staff recognition, Mr. Adam Telfer. And I I'm saving him the the grief of having to go stand up in front with me and receive it. But Mr. Telfer has been here 10 years now. So.
Congratulations.
He's he's just got 20 more to go. That's all I got.
That's all. Yes, thank you. And welcome to the new staff members and the not the old staff members, the young staff members who've been here a while, Adam. Thank you. Okay, legal matters. Okay, nothing new to add. I think we have some items in executive session where they'll update us. Legislative matters?
Just one. So we did last month, we had the Schluter Group gentleman came and were nice enough to nice enough to give us an update. However, we did receive the statements of qualifications for the RFQ we had out for legislative affairs consultant. They did submit on that and and so did not come and and to give us an update today. But that's that's really the only update I have is that we did receive those statements. We did. We received five statements total. We reached out to all of the firms that were suggested. We had a couple of different board members give us names to reach out to. So we did reach out to all those firms and we did get get five statements. We will be coming back next month and asking for approval of a selection on that.
Any questions on legal or legislative matters? Okay, item 10, Budget Committee. I will not ask you to give us an update on anything the Budget Committee may have done. The treasurer becomes the chair of the Budget Committee. And then we tend to, we're going to honor that. So you will be the chair and maybe Regina, if you want to stay on, just let me know after the meeting and we'll work through that. Budget Committee will start ramping up very, very soon within next 30 days or so. I would suggest you have some conversations with Joan. Construction Committee, you have a report from Nick that made it into your packet. If you have any questions, I attend that meeting. I'm a committee member there. I'm happy to answer them. Okay, Board of Managers. So the Board of Managers elected a new chair as they do every May. And here's our new chair here. If you'll give a quick introduction for those of you that those of us that don't know you.
Sure. So I'm Phil Gage. I'm the GM over at Green Valley. So I'll just give you a quick verbal rundown tonight. You can't expect a written report from me in the board packets. I'll endeavor to do that from this point forward. So the Board of Managers did meet on the ninth and we want to thank Justin for his service he does as a Board of Managers for, I understand, a little bit of time. But anyway, so thanks, Justin, for that. We did discuss in a little bit more detail a few of the items that are on tonight. We took a briefing from Nuasis River Authority, the Board of Managers did. Many of you probably already know about that project. It's desalinization down near Corpus Christi and a pipeline that comes up with 30 comes up highway 37, right? So I know those of us on this side of the river have talked about it. It may not be so useful for those on the other side of the Guadalupe River. But however, that's available. And I think Kerry is going to have Nuasis come talk to us at some point in the future if you if you guys haven't already. So in the packet, the staff did a really good job with some new products. They came up with a drought contingency plan tracker. It's probably more useful for the general managers to use. So we reviewed that in detail, probably not so useful for trustees, but for the GMs it's useful. They also came up with a THM tracker that's also useful probably for, you know, the folks that operate the systems, less so for trustees. So I want to commend the staff for putting that in there. So tonight, there's three business items that you guys had on there. The Board of Managers will recommend on item number 11A that you do ratify that emergency order for well one. We discussed in a little bit more detail, you know, the failure that well one out at well ranch. So we support that. The other two items, we did not render a recommendation on those two. The last item, we didn't have the material available on ninth of of April, item C, there 11C to discuss with the managers. So going forward, look forward to doing whatever this board needs on the Board of Managers and we'll take guidance from the president as the order of march, what you want us to do. And appreciate it very much. Penning any questions?
Questions? Thank you very much. We look forward to your written report. Okay, item 11, General Business. We'll start with item 11A, discuss, consider and take possible action on resolution 250503, ratifying, authorizing and improving the declaration of emergency in order to carry out the immediate corrective action in the form of time sensitive. Wells Ranch number one repairs and sponsor complete operational failure of the well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just like last month, this resolution will actually have to be read in its entirety. So if we have a willing volunteer, that would be great. Mr. Porter?
Hold on, I got a question.
Yes, please.
So how is this declared emergency when you have other wells? We have other wells that can produce water. How is this particular incident declared an emergency?
Because this having the wells are running at basically at their capacity right now. So having this one down impedes our ability to provide all the capacity. If everybody's pulling at their full rate, we wouldn't be able to provide that water.
Is that the true definition of an emergency with TCQ would declare an emergency?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 25 dash zero five dash zero three, and I'm just going to read this whole page. On April 30th, 2025, Wells Ranch well number one experienced a complete operational failure and is currently incapable of producing raw water to be supplied to the Wells Ranch Water Treatment Plant for treatment and distribution to CRWA's member entities and their customers. Be resolved by the CRWA Board of Trustees. One, that is hereby declared that A, continuous water service by CRWA is essential to the life, health and safety of the public. B, the primary duty of CRWA, including its management and employees, is to maintain continuous and adequate service at all times to protect the safety and health of the public against the danger inherent in the interruption of service. C, the operational failure of the existing Wells Ranch well number one that supplies raw water to the well Wells Ranch Water Treatment Plant, AKA Wells Ranch WTP, is an emergency condition because the operation of the Wells Ranch well number one is vital and CRWA CRWA is unable to achieve full production capacity at the Wells Ranch WTF. It should be WTP?
Should be WTP.
Yeah, WTP without the Wells Ranch well number one in service.
Please finish your motion.
D, failure to achieve full production capacity at the Wells Ranch WTP will create a serious health hazard as CRWA will be unable to treat and distribute potable water, potable water to its member entities who then distribute the potable water to thousands of its customers that comprise the public. E, the condition constitutes an emergency and therefore requires immediate corrective action in the form of time sensitive Wells Ranch well number one repairs in the short term to allow the Wells Ranch WTP to continue operating at full production capacity. F, the Wells Ranch well number one is as repaired may still have to be replaced in the long term. Two, that based on the declaration of emergency, the initiation of the time sensitive Wells Ranch well number one repairs is hereby ratified and further confirmed as authorized and approved. Three, that CRWA's general manager actions to initiate the time sensitive Wells Ranch well number one repairs as quickly as possible are hereby ratified. Four, that CRWA's general manager is hereby further authorized and directed to execute all documents and take all other actions necessary to carry out the time sensitive Wells Ranch well number one repairs as quickly as possible. Five, that CRWA's general manager is hereby also authorized and directed to comply with section 49 dot 274 of the Texas Water Code and submit to the Executive Director of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, details describing the specific serious health hazard as soon as practical practicable, following the issuance of a purchase contract to initiate the time sensitive Wells Ranch well number one repairs. Six, that CRWA's general manager is hereby further authorized and directed to come back to this Board of Trustees for any additional approvals and or ratifications deemed necessary and involving the Wells Ranch number one repairs. That motion includes any spelling corrections that need to be made to this document as we're discussed as I was talking.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you too in that. We have a second. Any other discussion in this item? Everyone understands the the motion in place? Please don't make us read it again. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you for reading that, Martin. I promise you're exempt from the next one. Okay, thank you. Item 11B, discuss, consider and take possible action on resolution 250504, approving the lease of 10 acre feet of raw water to be treated at the Hayes Caldwell Water Treatment Plant. It's my understanding staff found 10 additional acre feet of surface water rights that can be processed through Hayes Caldwell. It makes up a 10 acre foot deficiency that was found in the contract a couple of years ago. Do I have a motion to approve this? I have a motion motion and a second. All those in favor?
I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Question. Where was this water right tied to? Who's it tied to? Specific name or is it?
Alan Cummings.
It's a Cummings?
Yes, we've already, I guess, purchased water rights from the Cummings family in the past. And Mr. Cummings approached staff and said he had 10 additional acre feet. He was willing to lease. It's on a five year term with automatic renewals unless one of the parties gives 90 day notice.
As far as payment, how is that going to be structured? Is it based on a contract? How is this going to be paid for?
Well, so it's it's at the the G B R A rate $184 per acre foot. And when you say how, you mean, is it just going to get worked into the budget? Is that what you're asking?
So for instance, you know, if you want to look at the numbers, 40%, 10%, is that the way it is or just split a fourth to everyone? So everybody gets a piece of the pie?
Well, my intent was to do it for the same percentages that we already already observe.
So to the contract?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Joan, can you answer how the water leases that Hayes Caldwell are taking care of the raw water leases, not the G B R A water? With the microphone, I'm sorry. I'm going to make you come up.
So is my understanding that this 10 acre feet of water would be divided up amongst the Hayes Caldwell entities based upon their current contracts?
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Owens?
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions on this? We had a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Okay, G B R A. Discuss, consider and take possible action on resolution 250505, proving CRWA's participation in the G B R A Habitat Conservation Plan. And we have members from G B R A here.
Yeah, I've been invited, Mr. Daniel Large and Chad Norris to give us a presentation and update on the Habitat Conservation Plan.
You should.
I I think she'll click it for you. I don't think that's a clicker, is it? Hannah, if you can start your hit your microphone there, Daniel, please.
Thank you. Mr. President and trustees, good evening. My name is Daniel Large. I'm with Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. I'll be providing a high level overview of what this Guadalupe Habitat Guadalupe River Habitat Conservation Plan is and what this opportunity means for Canyon Regional Water Authority. And I'll be happy to take your questions as well after the presentation. You could slide to the next. So first off, what is a Habitat Conservation Plan or HCP? I'll introduce another acronym. Habitat Conservation Plans are basically a means for regulated entities to get what is called an incidental take permit. And that permit is basically the holy grail of this initiative for G B R A and for others that choose to participate. So an incidental take permit is a permit that is issued by the federal government that allows entities that cause impacts to endangered species to continue their operations that cause those impacts, provided they have a habitat conservation plan. So types of activities that can cause impacts to endangered species include use of water and removal of water from aquatic ecosystems. And so that can potentially cause liability under the Endangered Species Act. And so federal regulations allow entities to get this permit, provided they develop and submit a habitat conservation plan or HCP. So an HCP is required to identify what those impacts are and quantify how much of the impacts there are for the given activities on specific endangered species. The Habitat Conservation Plan also, just as importantly, specifies conservation that is going to be committed to completely offset the impact on those species. And that assessment must be based on the best available science. So if you could slide to the next one. G B R A over the past several years has been in the process of developing a habitat conservation plan to provide regulatory coverage for six threatened or endangered species that are in the Guadalupe River Basin. These include three native freshwater mussels. So these are not the notorious zebra mussel you've heard about. These are the charismatic native freshwater mussels. The Guadalupe orb, the Guadalupe fat muck and in the false spike. I will say the Guadalupe orb and the false spike are in the area of Canyon Regional's operations. Down by the coast, we are also going to be covering a federally threatened bird called the eastern black rail that breeds down on the on the mouth of the Guadalupe River around the the delta. And the hooping crane that spends the winter on the bay. And finally, the Guadalupe darter, which kind of coexists with those freshwater mussels. These are all federally protected with the exception of that fish on the bottom right, the Guadalupe darter. And that fish is currently state threatened, so it doesn't have the same federal protections. But we do expect it to be federally protected in the near future because it's continued to decline. And that fish essentially coexists with the freshwater mussels. So we consider it a kind of a two for one type deal. So if you can slide on to the next. The way that we can provide opportunities beyond G B R A to other entities to participate in the plan with us and to obtain the same regulatory protections is through what is called the Second Party Take Coverage Program. So this diagram kind of lays out exactly how this works. And this is provided for in the federal regulations. So this is a legal arrangement that's recognized by the federal government. And so as you can see here in the yellow, the U S Fish and Wildlife Service is the permitting authority. The Fish and Wildlife Service would issue that incidental take permit to G B R A as the primary permittee. And then G B R A has the opportunity to extend permit coverage to other entities that are willing to provide conservation to offset their impacts as well. And so in this arrangement, you can see Canyon Regional would be one of the entities covered under this legal agreement, which is called a certificate of inclusion. And we have other entities throughout the basin that are also lined up to participate in the plan. They include local governments, other water utilities, heavy industry down by the coast and some small recreational businesses. You could go on to the next. We've been working closely over the past couple of years with Mr. Avery and Adam Tefler. And we've been Telfer, excuse me, and happy 10 years as well to learn about Canyon Regional's activities and how you might fit with the plan and so that it meets your needs operationally. So as you can see here, the specific activities that would be covered for Canyon Regional would be your water diversions from your canyon and San Marcos River water rights. And that covers the actual physical. And that covers the actual physical removal of the water from the system that can impact the species by reducing their habitat and flows. And also the maintenance and operation of your water intakes at those, at your tube plants as well. Those, the maintenance and operation of the intakes can impact species because of the suction of the intake itself impinging and entraining endangered organisms in, in the suction current. Next slide, please. Just to quantify the impacts of operations, both for GBRA and other entities, we've developed a comprehensive modeling framework. I'm not going to go into detail on this, but we could spend a couple of hours just talking about all the technical details and nuances of this. But just suffice it to say, we are using the water availability model to model the effect of withdrawals from the, water withdrawals from the system. The WHAM, as it's called, is also used by T C Q to monitor permits and decide on permit issuances. And we are also considering wastewater discharges for entities that have that activity and water impoundments as well. We are analyzing impacts on water quality using Qualtechs, which is for wastewater discharges. Again, that's not applying to CRWA for this. But we use those modeling tools to estimate specific amount of impact to the species in terms of numbers of mussels and numbers of Guadalupe darters, for example. When we spit that out, that would be in the permit request to obtain coverage for causing take to that number of endangered species. Next slide, please. We are now at a stage where we are in the final stages of, of the plan, and we are working on conservation concepts. So for Canyon Regional-specific activities, the preliminary conservation concepts would include dedicating a portion of the canyon and San Marcos water rights to be used for stream flow for species protection. And to continue to implement your drought contingency plan and to develop and implement an educational program about endangered species and conservation. We'd be working closely and have been working closely with staff to ensure these are essentially low hanging fruit or feasible measures that would be worth the squeeze. And the other half of the plan is the general implementation of it. We estimate that implementing this plan is going to cost around a million dollars a year. And those costs would be split up equitably between the participants based on the scale of your operation and the amount of impacts that you have to endangered species. So GBRA, being the major player in this, is going to cover the lion's share of costs. And then the remaining costs would be equitably portioned out between the other participants just according to the scale of your operations and impacts. All of this, I have to emphasize as well, is still subject to negotiation with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We plan on submitting an application in spring of next year. And at that point, we'll negotiate with the service as to the final details of, of the plan. Next slide, please. And so to wrap up, we are now at a stage where we're wanting to confirm the participation of the various entities in addition to GBRA. And so to accomplish that, we have established memorandum of agreement where we would formalize the relationship with each entity to stick with GBRA to participate in the plan. And so this MOA is something that would be executed before permit issuance. And then after the incidental take permit is issued, then we would again formalize our relationship and extend the protection, regulatory protection using that Certificate of Inclusion agreement I mentioned previously. So the resolution before you today is related to this memorandum of agreement. And we are hoping ideally to execute these by the end of the month, but that is not a hard deadline. I understand that if the board needs time for further consideration, we could definitely accommodate that. So. Next slide. Think that takes me to the end, and I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
At what point will we know the cost for your?
Yes, sir. The estimated cost at this time is forty-five thousand. That, I saw that in the board materials. The actual number will be determined next year, once we enter into negotiations with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and we understand the final scope of the plan.
Other questions for GBRA?
So is that forty-five thousand for Canyon Regional? Or was it forty-five thousand?
Yes, sir. I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And that would be an annual cost.
Yes, sir. Kerry, if we, if we don't fall under the umbrella of another organization, do we have to do this ourselves?
It's my understanding that we do. I'll look to Mr. Telfer for confirmation on that.
I don't think we necessarily have to, but the impacts of not doing one would be far more significant. So if we're able to receive pressure from EPA or the Fish and Wildlife, and we didn't have a plan in place, it would, it would not be good for us. So.
So if, if we, if we didn't join and if we developed our own plan, then we would also have to get our, a separate incidental take permit?
Yes.
And if we didn't get that permit and it was found that we harmed an endangered species, what would be the ramifications?
I don't know what the ramifications would be. I don't know if GBRA has done any research on that.
It would be a potentially grounds for enforcement of the act against the entity or lawsuit.
And the cost of us doing this independently is projected to be exponentially higher if we just did one on our own. We're kind of cost sharing in this one. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, it would be considerably higher. And so.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. So this month, I, you know, you're just not seeing the, the draft MOA. There was copies on the table on the way in. So, you know, if you want to pass a resolution today, that would be great. But if not, I can bring it back to you next month and ask you for, for, to, to vote on the resolution.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Oh, Mr. John, I'm sorry. I didn't see your red.
No, that's okay. I'm still kind of confused a little bit. So I'm going to take this back a bit. Okay, so for example, we take water. So what the plan is, is for us to set aside for a portion of that water to be able to put back into the system?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So why, if we have to set aside this, the, the water, why even take it and put that system in stress in the first place?
So the exact details have yet to be ironed out, but the concept is that it wouldn't have been diverted in the first place. It's just water on your permit that you wouldn't necessarily be taking.
Thank you. That's, that's what I wanted to make sure because taking it and setting it aside over here is still going to put stress on the system. Why do that in the first place? So thank you for clarifying that part.
So staff, are there any other questions for GBRA or staff, please, sir?
We got a question. So it's forty-five thousand what for, I mean, someone was friendly with the Edwards Habitat Conservation Plan. It was like for seventeen years. So is it forty-five thousand for seventeen years? Or what's the process for the permit? Once you get the permit, you know?
Thank you. So I actually didn't touch on this, but we are looking at applying for a fifty-year permit. And so that provides really major certainty for long-term planning. And it would be an annual cost per year. Going out fifty years, though, I, we are also factoring in escalator for cost of living increases. We have yet to work out the exact details of what that specifically would be, but we would need to account for that due to inflation.
Okay, I wholeheartedly agree that, you know, this is an effort we need to undertake. I understand that. I'm not so much concerned with the cost, but I'd like to see what the cost is going to be after fifty years. You know, what are we committing to as a utility? Fifty years to pay this? My, my question I have is, so if we were to, it's an MOU, it's, it's an MOU, MOA. I have no power of mention in MOA because we're going to get those numbers, you know? I just want to make sure that when we start going through the budgeting process, that we're aware of this ahead of time so that we know we can put in our budgets. And if we have rate increases, they can be applied to our rate increases. So that's the only thing I ask for. But I do see the effort. I mean, it's similar to what the Edwards did, and Edwards more expensive than this.
So Mr. Gibbs said that we have the ability to terminate for ninety days for any reason from the memorandum of agreement. Any other questions or comments? Discussing it with who's? Yeah, I, my bigger concern about this is not going back to individual member entities, right? Because you've been given the authority by your entity to, to take actions here at Canyon Regional. My concern is y'all got, y'all got the MOA this afternoon. You know, that's a little bit of my concern with this and that I thought y'all may need a little bit more time just to take it back. That gives you the time you need to talk with your board, but it really gives the trustees the time to make sure that the MOA is what? This is what you're, you're, you're going to authorize Kerry to sign and execute? If you did not read it before the meeting, then you have no idea what you're authorizing Kerry to execute. That, that was my main concern about this. Sure, I was, I was just waiting for everyone to get their comments before I asked for action. Do we have any other comments? So that we have two mechanisms here for action. We can make a motion to, to approve this resolution, or we can make a motion to table this resolution and bring it back next month.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second. We had a motion in a second to table the item until next month. Any other discussion? Can you use your microphone?
I would like to see this go back to the Board of Managers.
Okay, duly noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming and doing the presentation. Y'all have been working on this for a long time.
Thank you.
We got a rough, we got a rough one, at least a year ago, if not two years ago, if I remember correctly. So appreciate you taking the time and sitting through our part of the meeting. Okay, at this time, we will go into executive session. I have to read these items off. So if you'll bear with me for just a minute before you try and run out of here and, and I lose my quorum. We will go into executive session. The Board of Trustees may meet in an executive session to discuss the following items, if any, pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, including where appropriate, sections five five one oh seven one, five five one oh seven two, five five one oh seven four, five five one oh seven six, five five one oh eight six, five five one oh eight nine, and four one eight one eighty-three F, the Texas Government Code. All formal action will occur in open session. First items to discuss, discussion and receive legal advice concerning cause number twenty five oh seven eight two C V E, City of San Marcos versus Canyon Regional Water Authority, County Line Special Utility District, Chris McClear Special Utility District, Maxwell Special Utility District and Martindale Water Supply Corporation, pending in the four hundred and fifty-sixth District Court of Guadalupe County, Texas. Item B, discussion and receive legal advice concerning cause number twenty four oh three seven seven C V E, Canyon Regional Water Authority versus Trihydro Corporation and David Maxwell P E, pending in the four hundred and fifty-sixth District Court of Guadalupe County, Texas. Item C, discussion and receive legal advice concerning, concerning cause number two five oh seven six two C V E, Canyon Regional Water Authority versus Windsor Chase LLC and Ray Michael and Charlie Jean Bright, pending in the District Court of Guadalupe County, Texas. And item D, discussion and receive legal advice, advice concerning dispute with Windsor Chase LLC and Ray Michael and Charlie Jean Bright concerning breach of groundwater rights agreement. Okay, we will now end our regular session at seven oh eight PM. We will begin executive session at seven thirteen PM. As soon as I have a quorum at seven thirteen, I will start executive session. Thank you.